We have with us tonight Pastor Ross Halbersmall from New Hope Alliance Church to deliver an invocation.
Thank you. Will you please stand? Almighty Father, the Creator of the heavens, the universe, and this place that is so beautiful on planet Earth, we give you praise because you are pure and just, and you do all things well. Tonight, give to these leaders wisdom. This room is well attended tonight, and so there are probably varying perspectives on matters on the agenda. Give to each one the ability to listen, to reason, that when they leave, they will understand what is best through this process. We pray in the precious name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman De Haven, you lead us in the pledges.
I pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adopting the agenda, Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no additions.
Option is presented, Mr. Chairman.
I think Mr. Fisher has a...
I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to add, under committee appointments, HRAB appointment that I have for this evening. It was on the last agenda we have, but it's not on this one.
With that change, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor De Haven makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab F, Parks and Recreation Commission Report, and Tab G, Human Resources Committee Report.
Is there a motion to... Questions first? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Next, the citizen comment, agenda items only that are not subject to public hearing. Mr. Rowley, did anyone sign up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four citizens that have signed up. The first is Carol Dela Cruz to talk about private streets in Lake Frederick.
If you had come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, my name is Carol Dela Cruz. It's Dr. Carol Dela Cruz, and I'm a resident of Shenandoah at Lake Frederick, address 105 Manahoak Court. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge fellow residents from Shenandoah who are here. If you would just raise your hand. We have a good attendance here this evening. All of us in Shenandoah bought our homes in a community plan for approximately 2,100 residences with gated private streets. For many of us, the gated private streets was an important part of our buying decision. Beginning in 2012, I participated as a member of the redevelopment study group consisting of nine homeowners that worked with Lansdowne prior to their purchase of the property. Although we differed on some points, we did agree on the following two in particular. One is in order for them to fulfill the commitment to build 2,100 homes. They had to do that in parallel with both age-restricted and non-age-restricted markets. Second, given the geography of the development and existing portion that is already developed, it was imperative that we continue to have private gated streets. This provides additional security for the existing homeowners, as we expected, as well as a sense of cohesiveness and community among the age-restricted residents. We presently have two age-restricted sections with private streets. One is gated, and the other, at the moment, is not. As new age-restricted homes are built and non-age-restricted homes are added, it is our hope and desire that our community be one of inclusion and not exclusion, to maintain that sense of community, particularly within the age-restricted sections. Imagine the impact on the sense of community and on community governance in a situation where roughly half of the age-restricted community has gated access and private streets, and the other half has no gated access, and a mixture of private and public streets. Such a condition would create disjunction within our community, not to mention the challenges it would present for HOA governance. The original developer was granted the permission to have private streets throughout our community of 2,100 homes. The only change is that our community will now be comprised of both age-restricted and non-age-restricted residents. The roads will be the same. Lansdowne is asking on our behalf that they be able to develop the mixed community of 2,100 residences with gated private streets. This is important to us, both current and future residents, as it will provide a sense of cohesiveness rather than separateness within our community. It is of critical importance to the residents in the age-restricted sections that still do not yet have gated... a gate. We ask the Board of Supervisors to bring this matter to conclusion by scheduling public hearings on the private road request before the county, approving the requested ordinance change to allow for the application to install private streets in our five communities, and approving Lansdowne's application to install private streets throughout Lake Frederick. Thank you for the opportunity to the address the board.
Next, Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Walker, private streets.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, all. I would like to thank you for providing us with this opportunity to come before you and speak this evening regarding the issue of private streets for the Lake Frederick community. My name is Kevin Wallach. I'm a retired attorney, having spent the last 28 years in the financial regulatory world. Along with my wife, Margaret, a retired accounting manager, we are residents of Lake Frederick in the Opecan District. My wife and I welcome and embrace the diversity that a mixed age-restricted and non-age-restricted community will bring. And as has been underscored by many urban sociologists as early as Jane Jacobs and Edward Banfield, in the long run, we believe it will enrich our lives and those of others in our community. We also support the developer's desire to build out such a mixed community with gated access and private streets. As Dr. Dela Cruz previously indicated, we believe an integrated private street development will provide benefits to all homeowners, will eliminate complexities, and avoid challenges in the governance and day-to-day management of the HOA. In a broader demographic and economic perspective, we read with interest John Martin's reported comments at the recent spring dinner of the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. In brief, Mr. Martin's key points were: Aging baby boomers will fuel the area's economy in the short term, but younger lifestyle seekers will become an increasing percentage of the area's population over the next two or three decades. Boomers are redefining what it's like to grow old, looking at the promise of aging, not the problems of aging. Younger lifestyle seekers are looking for place first, career and job second. They want a sense of place and community, carefree living and sustainability. That, I submit, is exactly the two classes of homebuyers our mixed community has been designed to address. And giving these broad demographic trends, I submit that Lake Frederick development may well be, if not should be, the model for future planned communities in Frederick County and the northern Shenandoah. Finally, allowing private streets for such a community will align both costs and benefits with the residents of the community in an age where less and less transportation funding will be coming from the state. Such an alignment is surely a more viable option than relying on the county's general taxpayers to fund the maintenance and repairs of public streets. We respectfully request the Board of Supervisors to bring this matter to a conclusion by scheduling public hearings on the private road request before the county, approving the requested ordinance change to allow for the application to install private streets in our five communities, and approving Lansdowne's application to install private streets throughout the Lake Frederick community. Thank you. Sorry for exceeding my time.
Next, Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Richard Seton to speak to private streets.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Richard Seton, and I'm a resident of Lake Frederick in the Opecan District. About 35 years ago, I was the clinical director of the Woodstock office of the Northwestern Community Services Board, which at that time was based in Winchester. I knew back then that when... that this was the region in which I wanted to live, and we've been fortunate to be here for seven years now. I'm also serving on the Board of Directors of Habitat for Humanity, Winchester, Frederick County, and I'm the chairman of their Family Services Committee. We all have slightly different reasons for why we moved here. And like any diverse group, we don't all agree on very many community topics, as you might hear later tonight. However, on the issue of having private streets, there is a clear, about 90% consensus. Let me provide a somewhat broader historical and factual perspective for our request for private streets. For starters, we know that the county approved the private street and gated access for about 2,100 homes at Lake Frederick as early as the MDP for the property in 2001. The only change, and all that Lansdowne is requesting, is the ability to submit an application to the county to provide private streets for both age-restricted and non-restricted homes. In effect, at the highest level, not much else has changed than the plan since that early MDP. It will still consist of some 2,100 homes. The total paved streets areas will be about the same, and the amenities will also be about the same, and in some ways, even better. Importantly, the HOA and the residents are no strangers to the challenges and benefits of private streets. We currently have about 4.8 miles of private streets, all built to VDOT-based standards. For several years, our HOA, in the absence of a fiscally viable developer, funded and managed to manage snow removal for those streets. We have a solid grasp on the reserve requirement necessary for these streets from both cost and reserve studies performed in 2011 and again in 2013, and from the considerable prior life experience and knowledge that our residents have brought with them. Finally, let's not lose sight of the fact that almost two-thirds of the streets upon completion will be private anyway, considering both the age-restricted sections and the townhouse areas of the non-restricted sections. Our request, when approved, will simply enable the other one-third of the streets to be integrated into a constant, consistent framework for HOA governance. Therefore, representing the overwhelming majority of the residents at Lake Frederick, we respectfully urge the speedy approval of the developer's request so that redevelopment can proceed expeditiously. And we, the residents, as well as the county, can all benefit from this exceptional community and equally exceptional county in which we live. Let me summarize. One, approval was already granted for the project with private streets. Two, we have very strong support for private streets. And three, we are prepared historically, financially, and intelligently to manage these private streets. Thank you for hearing me out.
Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last speaker is Larry Atkinson to speak to private streets.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, my name is Larry Atkinson. I live at 101 Tuttelo Lane at Lake Frederick in Opecan District. I'm here concerning the private streets issue. As I understand the issue before you tonight, that issue isn't solely a Shenandoah issue. It's a county-wide issue, worthy of comments from all county residents and developers, not just from Shenandoah. It's not about whether I or anyone else want or don't want private streets. It's not about whether we at Shenandoah think we can afford or can't afford those private streets while meeting our long-term obligations. Those discussions are more appropriate at a future meeting. Tonight's focus is... should be about the county code and its changes to permit private streets in any current and all future our five district communities, and whether the code changes proposed by Lansdowne are adequate to serve the needs of the entire county. We at Shenandoah bought expecting an age-restricted community with private streets throughout, but that concept was stymied by the developer's desire to put non-age-restricted homes between our community area... our age-restricted community areas. Whether we eventually get or don't get private streets in the other areas is not the fundamental issue here tonight. The real issue is whether you are going to allow a democratic process of a public hearing, a principle that you have followed when considering other county issues from conditional permits to zoning requests... rezoning requests. My question is, should not all county citizens and their developers have an opportunity at a public hearing to voice their opinions on this issue? As to the proposed code changes before you, my wife's and my opinion on those proposed changes is that they are inadequate for either the county needs or for guiding homeowners and developers with appropriate criteria that must be met for their request to even be considered by you, a point at an earlier... that was raised at an earlier Transportation Committee meeting. Our position is stated in our letter to Supervisor Wells, and that letter is in your agenda package, and we ask you to consider our suggestion when making your decisions. We ask you to focus on tonight's agenda issue, that is, whether to change the county code and how it should be changed, and whether to hold a public hearing. Tonight is not to consider Lansdowne's private street request for Shenandoah per se, but rather to consider their request for a coding change affecting the county. I urge you to vote to allow that public hearing. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Rowley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, May 14, 2014.
Move for approval submitted, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to abstain from this vote.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Tibbs, do you have the abstains? Next, under county officials, it's Supervisor De Haven. If you'll join me. Think this thing works.
It should be on.
It's on.
The Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Timothy D. Hill. Would he come forward, please?
For consideration, he's Employee of the Month for May 2014. Timothy serves the Northwestern Regional Adult Detention Center and is an officer that adheres to operational imperative of teamwork and is a go-to person for more difficult and challenging questions that are presented to the classification unit of jails. Officer Hill, which closes with all security teams, makes certain that inmates are assigned to compatible housing, assuring issues are not missed, and is very good at making sure the census of each housing unit remains low and balanced in order to maximize the needs of additional staff, which in turn reduces overall expenses. I will now entertain a motion to approve Timothy D. Hill as Employee of the Month for May 2014.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess. Discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Timothy D. Hill is hereby recognized as Frederick County's Employee of the Month for May 2014. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to Timothy for his outstanding performance and dedicated service, and wishes him continued success in future endeavors. Thank you, sir. Now, next is committee appointments. We do not have suggestions for Agricultural District Advisory Committee yet.
Yes, sir.
Historic Resources Advisory Board, Redbud, are we ready?
No, sir.
And I believe, Mr. Fisher, you are.
Yes, sir. Clint Jones represents the Shawnee District. His term expires this month, and he is willing to serve again, so I'd like to move to reappoint Mr. Jones to the HRAB Committee.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven. Discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Clint Jones is reappointed to the Historic Resources Advisory Board. Next is Parks and Recreation. Redbud, are we ready?
Yes, sir. I've spoken with Mr. Zablinsky. He is willing to be reaffirmed for another four-year term.
Is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Martin J. Zablinsky is reappointed as a Redbud representative to Parks and Recreation Commission. Next is another Historic Resources Advisory Board, Denny Perry, Member-at-Large, and he is willing to reserve, and the chairman would hope that the board would reappoint him.
Move for reappointment.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton, and a second by... who was that?
Supervisor Hess.
Supervisor Hess. Discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Denny Perry is reappointed to the Historic Resources Advisory Board. Next is the Development Impact Fact Model Committee, and I believe we do not have recommendations. Do we, Mr. Rowley?
That is correct.
Economic Development Authority is on hold. Social Services Board, Back Creek, are we ready?
No, sir. Do not.
I did neglect to tell you of that person that approached me, and I believe it is Back Creek.
Okay, great.
Karen... excuse me. Shawnee District.
Mr. Chairman, I have talked with Ms. Kimball, and she is willing to serve again, and I would so move for her reappointment.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven. Discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Karen L. Kimball is reappointed to the Social Services Board. Winchester Frederick County Tourism Board, I believe we have three recommendations. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of the appointment of Teresa Gaines, James E. Richard, and Karen Helm to the Tourism Board.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Teresa Gaines, James E. Richard, and Karen B. Helm are hereby appointed. Is this a city confirmation as well?
Yes, sir.
Have they done theirs yet?
I do not know, Mr. Chairman.
It is our vote that they be confirmed.
Yes, sir.
We'll have to wait and see what the city does if they have not already. Winchester Regional Airport Authority, the county representative. Mr. Fisher, do you have any knowledge here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Largent is willing to serve again, and I would so move.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Rich Largent is reappointed to the Winchester Regional Airport Authority. And last is Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Committee. Mr. Lofton, do we have anything?
I have several applications, which pleases me. We will be doing those interviews, and I will have my recommendations next month.
Good. I believe that completes the committee assignments. Next is a resolution in reference to the Frederick County Board of Supervisors concurrence with the Frederick County School Board electing to pay the VSRS board-certified rate. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you a resolution requesting the school board, which is electing to pay the VRS board-certified rate at 7.82% for its second and smaller employee group as opposed to the alternate rate of 7.44%. The General Assembly requires that local governing bodies approve the school division's choice to take the higher VRS board-certified rate, and approval is thereby requested.
Questions to Mr. Rowley? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have made for adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher. Discussion? Let's do a voice on this. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Whoops. Was it... was it Wells not here? Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next on the agenda is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the commissioner's request dated May 7, 2014, to authorize the treasurer to refund Navy Federal Credit Union the amount of $6,559.40 for adjustment to business equipment filings for 2014. Upon receiving requested detailed listings, staff discovered exempt software for new systems in their recent expansion. Software separately purchased is not taxable for business equipment, personal property under the Code of Virginia. Since Navy Federal Credit Union has already paid their entire bill in full, a refund is due, and this is pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.1-3900A Code of Virginia. And it's requested that the board act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the commissioner's memorandum.
Questions to Mr. Rowley? Board?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of this refund and also the request for the supplemental appropriation.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven? Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the commissioner's request dated May 13, 2014, to approve a refund for Partnership for Response and Recovery, L L P, in the amount of $13,664.57 for adjustment of business license filing for part of 2013. This prorated refund resulted from Partnership for Response and Recovery, L L P, moving out of the county. The commissioner's staff has verified this refund with the company and with their gross receipts. So pursuant to Section 58.1 of the Code of Virginia as amended, the county attorney hereby notes his consent. The Board of Supervisors will need to act on the request for the approval and of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the commissioner's memorandum.
Questions to Mr. Rowley? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the refund be approved for Partnership for Response and Recovery and that the appropriation also be approved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last request is the county attorney is in receipt of the commissioner's request dated May 15, 2014, to approve a refund for Wheels L T, the amount of $3,472.38 for the adjustment to personal property taxes filing for 2013 for proration of vehicles. This proration refund has been in the normal course of business and is generated from a division of the company separate from where bills are paid. And this, again, is pursuant to Section 58.1 of the Code of Virginia as amended. County attorney notes his consent. Board of Supervisors will also need to act on the request for the approval and of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the commissioner's memorandum.
Questions to Mr. Rowley? Then is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the refund for Wheels L T and the request for the supplemental appropriation.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, Public Works Committee. Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, the committee convened in a special meeting on Tuesday, May 20, to review bid results for the construction of the new Round Hill Fire and Rescue Station and Event Center. The committee reviewed proposed budget, proposed project budget, which included a bunch of items that we were trying to make sure the total project costs were included in this. Bids were received on May 15 in response to Frederick County's invitation for bid and subsequent prerequisite pre-bid meeting held on April 29. The attached bid summary highlights are included in your agenda. Seven bids were received. The low bid was $6,199,898 submitted by Caldwell &amp; Sammire Incorporated. This was considerably lower than the projected estimate by the architects. Site work costs will need to be distributed between Frederick County, Round Hill Fire and Rescue Company, and the developer, Silver Lake Properties. Agreements are currently being discussed and will be drafted to determine the actual distribution of these percentages. The fire station will be the responsibility of Frederick County, and the event center will be the responsibility of the Round Hill Fire and Rescue Company. We made a few adjustments to the project budget. Those adjustments, the total project budget was $6,904,000. The result of the meeting, and timing's been an issue on this entire project. It's been going on for a long time. I think there's a need to keep it moving. I know it seemed like it was going along very slow, but we need to keep this thing moving on at this point. So the committee is recommending going to a public hearing for award of the bid to the low bidder, and they also unanimously endorsed the proposed project budget of the $6.9 million. The caveats with this and the recommendation from the committee to go to public hearing are that discussions are still ongoing to determine the actual cost for the developer for that part of their site work, and then the site work cost that'll be distributed between Frederick County and the Round Hill Fire and Rescue Station. There were a number of things in the project that I think, you know, made it take a lot longer to get it, with the change of the site, the design of the station. The committee went through a number of things with a career, purely a career station, and if we had a career volunteer station, things we found out are a little different. So what the committee is requesting is to schedule a public hearing. Staff still needs to verify all of the figures that are in the bid. Staff also will be working on the exact cost for Silver Lake, Frederick County, and the Round Hill Fire and Rescue Company, and also the financing arrangements still need to be arranged also. Staff's working on that. So my motion would be that we send this to public hearing. And the reason for the motion is the timing to keep this thing moving. We can make a decision at the end of June, and maybe we, there are certain questions that need to be answered or aren't answered at that point that, you know, we don't necessarily have to answer all the questions at that time.
Let's go for some clarification on the motion. Mr. Fisher, Mr. Rowley, and myself have been talking, trying to figure out the best way to deal with a complex matter. Mr. Rowley, I believe this is a public hearing on a budget amendment?
Yes, sir.
Is what it actually is, the appropriation, in order to get that passed us? So that's, I think Mr. Fisher would accept that?
Yes, sir.
With the caveats you've said of the pieces still to be worked out, finance will see the item, but this is the budget amendment in order to set it in motion and enable award of contract at the appropriate time?
Right. The award of the contract is obviously subject to financing, and us being able to secure financing, and the public hearing enables us to do a budget amendment if we can meet all of those criteria.
Is everyone clear? Mr. Fisher, that is your motion to?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would also add to Mr. Supervisor Fisher's remarks that the timing of this is critical because there are some utilities where it'd be to our advantage to make sure this does move along in a timely fashion. Not that that should drive this decision, but it certainly would be advantageous to us as far as cost goes to try to keep this on track.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing on. This is to go to public hearing for a budget amendment. Is there no other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report. Yes, sir.
All right, next is finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance committee met on Wednesday, May 21 at 8:00 a.m. All members were present. Item numbers three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 13 were approved on the consent agenda, and I would so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 13 are approved under the consent agenda. Go ahead, sir.
Item number one, the Parks and Recreation Director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in an amount of $15,000. This amount represents use of proffer funds for a site plan and development cost for the northwest corner of Shrando Park. The item has been approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by, was that Supervisor Collins?
Was.
Discussion. Hearing on, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number two, the sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $62,962.15. This amount represents vacancy savings from the state compensation board to be used for phone services and part-time staff. No additional local funds are required. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number 11, the Fire and Rescue Deputy Chief requests discussion on the EMS Expense Recovery Program Fee Schedule. The committee recommends approval of the annual fee schedule evaluation per the C M S fee schedule and to adjust the county's fee schedule accordingly, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
The, excuse me. Finance Director requests approval of the V R S employer retirement contribution rate. The committee recommends approval of the certified rate and approval of the resolution to V R S, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Discussion was held on a borrowing resolution that would allow the county to be prepared in the event of a state budget is not adopted and state funds are not received. The committee recommends forwarding a borrowing resolution to the Board of Supervisors when available, and we'll deal with that at a future meeting.
That concludes your report.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing on an outdoor festival permit request of Aleah White, Kim Johnson, and Doug Stanford Sundown Fest. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a festival permit request as stated, and this is pursuant to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 86, Festivals, Section 86.3, which requires a permit and application and also an approval or denial of same. This is an outdoor festival permit to be held on Saturday, June 28, 2014, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the grounds of 740, 750, and 760 Merriman's Lane, Winchester, Virginia, property owned by 740 LLC, 750 LLC, and Willow Grove 5 LLC. I believe the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Questions to Mr. Rowley? Did the applicant wish to speak?
I have any specific questions. If you will have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Would you come forward? Supervisor Hess?
Yes, on May the 13th, the county attorney wrote a letter requesting some additional information on the application, and I got to make the observation that this application for outdoor festival permit probably has less specificity than any application I've seen in my short time on here. And I believe there were a series of questions and requests for information, and as of 4:00 this afternoon, the county attorney had not had a response from the letter.
Right, that's correct. We do have, we have addressed a number of those questions specified in the letter. It was a failing on our part not to return that information to the county attorney's office.
Would you mind, I hate to take the time, but would you mind stepping through for us responses to some of the items?
Yeah, sure. Let's see. Okay. We do have a copy of the tickets. Well, first of all, we do have permission from all of the property owners. We have applied for a county business license, and we do have that. We also have a LLC. We have a copy of the tickets, which will be on sale through Eventbrite, an online ticket service. We are still acquiring food vendors. We have designated an area for food and art vendors on the venue plan map. We do have a revised venue plan map. Items four and five, we have contacted Shane of the Round Hill Fire and Rescue Department, and they will be contacted again the week of the festival. Item six, parking and traffic, we have contacted Captain Heflin as well as Warren Gosnell and the Traffic Division on 52114. A reminder call will be put in the week of the festival. We have provided for parking and traffic on the venue plan map. Application, item eight, alcoholic beverages. We're still looking for a not-for-profit to partner with so that we might sell beer and wine, but if we don't find an appropriate not-for-profit, we won't sell beer and wine on the premise.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Question, Cory, when do you expect to deliver those answers to?
We'll get them to the county attorney tomorrow, in email form, or we could drop off a physical copy as well.
Any other questions to the applicant?
Mr. Chairman? One question, if I might. The name of the LLC, is that in the materials that you'll be submitting?
Yeah, it's Sundown Fest LLC.
Thank you.
Well.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We now conduct this public hearing on an outdoor festival permit request by Aleah White, Kim Johnson, and Doug Stanford Sundown Fest, festival to be held on Saturday, June 28, 2014, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the grounds of 740, 750, and 760 Merriman's Lane, Winchester, Virginia, property owned by 740 LLC, 750 LLC, and Willow Grove 5 LLC. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this festival permit Seeing no one close the public hearing, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'm very uncomfortable until staff has a chance to review the answers.
The unfortunate problem we're faced with, or the applicant is faced with, is our next meeting is, I believe, June the 24th, and this festival is scheduled for June the 28th.
Okay, folks, is this Opeckin or Back Creek?
It's Gainsborough.
Oh, okay. Third try, get it right.
I don't know. Can this be approved, subject to the county attorney receiving the information that was promised?
Mr. Williams, Mr. Rowley, counsel.
Yes, sir. That's the board's choice. If it's not acceptable, then the board's action to approve would not be sustained, I'm assuming.
That's correct.
Seems like, under the circumstances, the answers ought to be thorough and most accurate, or it ought not to meet muster under what you're talking about. You want to raise a motion and give it a whirl?
I'd like to move approval of the permit request, subject to the county attorney receiving responses, as noted.
All right, you have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would second that if we can set a date by which the applicant has to have that to the attorney.
Would you like to?
Sure.
Make an amendment with that?
No sense in setting a, can we ask the applicant when he can have that information in writing to the attorney?
His answer to that question, unless he changes his mind, was tomorrow.
Subject to receipt by tomorrow.
Friendly amendment, then?
Yes, sir.
Second to that. Everyone understand the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Collins?
I recognize that there's a May 13th letter, but that was not part of our packet. I would ask that, I don't think it needs to be a motion, but I assume we're referring to the May 13th letter from the county attorney, so I'd like to have that part of the record so that we know what we're talking about.
That can be accomplished?
Yes, sir.
Other discussion? All right, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes no, but the motion passes. The outdoor festival permit request is approved with conditions. Next is an ordinance to adopt chapter, a public hearing, ordinance to adopt Chapter 143 of the Frederick County Code, Stormwater Erosion and Sediment Control, and to repeal Chapter 79 of the Frederick County Code, Erosion and Sediment Control, both effective July 1, 2014. Mr. Rowley, you handling this or staff?
Mr. Wilder, I believe, is here.
Would you come forward, sir, and present?
I certainly wouldn't want to deny him this opportunity.
Good evening.
Any changes to what we last saw?
Not what you got dated May 20th. I think we're finished with changes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you is Chapter 143, Proposed Stormwater Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance. Yeah, this one's been around a while. We've went through a lot of changes. You all know about that. Essentially, it's a requirement. We have a stormwater program. We're going to take our existing department, adjust it, take these new requirements, and meet that requirement. I'm definitely not going to discuss the ordinance with you all unless you all have a question. Couple of things we are really... It's very important for us to do, is educate the development community. Because of what's happened with the legislation in the state, these changes are just happening, as you all know, week by week. What you have before you, in the May 20 draft, is an ordinance that's been approved by DEQ. Once our board approves it, it goes back to them, and then they authorize Frederick County to operate the Virginia Stormwater Management Permit Program. As part of the education, we scheduled an educational workshop on June the 10th, I'm sorry, in this room, to go over all the changes with the local development community. I've also met with Topo Virginia Building Association, discussed these changes with them. You know, just like everyone else, we just got to grin and bear it. You know, our option was either we run it, or we allow the State Department of Environmental Quality run it. With that said, I'll answer any of your questions, if anyone has anything they'd like to discuss.
I just have one, and I apologize for the lateness of it. I thought we were trying to remove fees from the code and have them dealt with in a different way, so that when they changed, we didn't have to have a code modification. I see the fees are included here. Was there a specific reason why we would do it that way?
Because of the last-minute changes from DEQ, the permit fees that we've adopted are the state permit fees, and that's what we're going to be utilizing, and those permit fees are set for a five-year period.
Five years?
Yes, sir. And that just seemed to be the easiest way to address the issue, because literally, the one fee changed as of the April 4 assembly code change, that actually, every single-family house now that's built in Frederick County does not have to pay the state portion of the fee. So that fee went from $290 per house down to $209. So that's a help, that they don't receive that revenue. And that's why we just included those fees, but they are set for five years.
Well, perhaps those that are here five years from now can reconsider that point. I'd hate to see that the state, when they change their fees, calls us to hold a public hearing and a coded amendment, but that's my only point. Thanks, sir. Any other questions?
It raises one in my mind. Can't we reference the state fee schedule and not actually list the fees? And I guess that one's directed to Mr. Williams.
We could.
That would really not be a change in the published public hearing, whatever else, Mr. Wilder. Do you...
I have no problem with that.
If the board went in that direction following the public hearing, would you give us any heartburn?
Yes, sir. We can make that.
Okay. Answered the question. Anything else? Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just one... Well, on the fee schedule, and it changed 32 times, but the percentage, it was a little ambiguous, because it really wasn't a percentage. There's a flat portion of that fee that the state gets.
It represents 28%.
Right. But if we could change the fee differently, but the state would still get their flat fee.
Well, the only problem is, is, as you all know, the fees were determined and evaluated by the state to help run a program, and the state's requiring that Frederick County have enough funding to pay for the staff tied to this program, and that's why we set the fees. Now, as part of this, we have eliminated the existing Erosion and Sediment Control Land Disturbance Permit Fee that we've been charging, and we are going to operate utilizing this fee.
My question, I guess, I'm sorry, I didn't get directly to it, is, if we refer to the state fee, is that going to be all-inclusive of, like, what were you rolling the Erosion and Sediment Control fee into?
Yes.
Okay.
We're still okay? All right. Thank you, sir. If there's no other questions.
Is that fee adequate, in your opinion?
At this time, yes. I think it's going to give us additional revenue at this time. Of course, development is starting back, but staff is more than able to keep up with the development trend. And again, I will tell you that we will have to evaluate this program over the next year and see how we're doing. There is a lot more requirements that we have to do, as far as plan review, and we're going to try to utilize existing staff. But the only situation would be is if we get to where we can't keep up with that, but I think... I feel the fees will sustain that.
Other questions? Thanks, sir. We'll now conduct a public hearing to consider an ordinance to adopt Chapter 143 of the Frederick County Code, Stormwater Erosion and Sediment Control, and to repeal Chapter 79 of the Frederick County Code, Erosion and Sediment Control, both effective July 1, 2014. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance? If so, would you come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please, anyone? Seeing no one close the public hearing, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the ordinance to adopt Chapter 143 of the Frederick County Code, Stormwater and Erosion and Sediment Control, and to repeal Chapter 79 of the Frederick County Code, Erosion and Sediment Control, both effective July 1, 2014.
Do you wish not to speak to the fee issue?
No, sir. Leave it as...
Leave it in the code.
You'll incorporate it by reference?
Yeah, I think that was... The way we ended up was, as Mr. Riley said, referred to it by reference.
You'd like to pull the fees out and have them referred to by reference?
Yes, sir.
So... Yes, sir, that's my motion. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Next item is a public hearing on the establishment of a new agricultural and forestal district in Greensprings, and Supervisor DeHaven will be abstaining. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the board, this is a request for a new agricultural and forestal district, which will have two parcels containing a total of 385 acres. It is located in the Gainesboro Magistail District, fronting on Glaze Orchard Road and Greensprings Road. If I could turn your attention to the map to the left, it gives you an idea where the district is going to be, in concern of where the... In the county, on kind of circle in yellow, that's the district we're talking about, in the Greensprings District. This is a map again of the outline of the two parcels that are equal to 300 acres for this new agro-forestal district. The Agriculture District Advisory Committee, ADAC, held a meeting on April 21, 2014, and recommended approval of the creation of this new agro-forestal district. The Planning Commission had its May 12, 2014, meeting unanimously recommendation for the creation of this agro-forestal district, and staff is seeking a decision from the board supervisors on the creation of this new agro-forestal district, which will be known as the Greensprings Agro-Forestal District. Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll answer any question that you or any of the supervisors may have on this proposed agro-forestal district. Thank you.
Questions to staff?
One question. Understand, all the ag district and forestal districts come up for... Are reextended every five years, and this one will be subject to renewal next year, so they all follow in the same schedule?
Yes, sir. That's what we do. Yes, sir.
Other questions? All right, then we'll conduct a public hearing to consider the establishment of a new agricultural and forestal district, Greensprings Agricultural and Forestal District. The proposed district contains 385.63-plus-or-minus acres within two parcels, and is located in the Gainesboro Magistail District, fronting Glaze Orchard Road, Route 682, to the south, and Greenspring Road, Route 671, to the east. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against the establishment of this new agricultural and forestal district? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please, anyone? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, this is Gainesboro.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of a new agricultural and forestal district, the Greensprings Agricultural and Forestal District, containing 385-plus acres.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, but Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. The new agricultural and forestal district is approved. Next is another public hearing, in addition to the South Timber Ridge Agricultural and Forestry District. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request of an addition to an existing agro-forestal district. It is known as the South Timber Ridge Agro-Forestal Agricultural and Forestry District. There'll be one parcel to be added to the district at 85 acres. This district is located in the Gainesboro Magistail District. It is along Hollow Road, Muse Road, and Gold Orchard Road. This increase of the district will be from 883 acres to 996 acres total. I'll turn your attention to the map on the left. Got a vicinity map again of the county, and where this... Kind of drew over, but that's where the district is going to be, where it currently actually is, and I'll give you a better shot of that. And this picture shows the current agro-forestal district, which is colored, which is the South Timber Ridge. The black outline is the parcel that's going to be added to the current district. Again, the Agricultural District Advisory Committee, ADAC, met on April 24, 2014, and recommended this district to be forwarded to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. The Planning Commission held a meeting on May 12, 2014, on this addition of 85 acres to the South Timber Ridge Agricultural and Forestry District, and unanimously approved and recommended it forward to the board supervisors. The staff is seeking a decision from the board supervisors on the additional acreage to the South Timber Ridge Agro-Forestal District. I'll answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, that you or any of the board members may have, on this additional acreage to the South Timber Ridge Agro-Forestal District. Thank you.
Questions to staff? I have one. The map seems to have a black line that shows like two parcels, and the literature says one parcel. Are we okay here?
Actually, that, on our mapping, it's actually one parcel. It's not two.
Okay. Just didn't want to get to jump. Not done.
Sir.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. We'll now conduct a public hearing to consider an addition to the South Timber Ridge Agriculture and Forestry District. The proposed addition contains a total of 85-plus-or-minus acres within one parcel, and is located in the Gainesboro Magistail District, along Hollow Road, Route 707, to the north, Muse Road, Route 610, and Gold Orchard Road, Route 708, to the east. Is there anyone here who would like to either speak for or against this addition to the South Timber Ridge Agriculture and Forestal District? So would you come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please? Seeing no one close the public hearing, this is Gainesboro.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend to the board, or make a motion to approve the addition of 85 acres plus or minus to the South Timber Ridge Agricultural and Forestal District.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. The addition is approved. Next is another public hearing on an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning, Article 8, development plans and approvals. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a proposed addition to the master development plan requirements. The addition would allow for a waiver of the master plan if an applicant chooses to process a detailed site plan in lieu of a master plan. Now, this waiver addition is in response to the business friendly committee recommendations. Now, the DRC reviewed this at their October 2013 and January 2014 meetings, and they forwarded the recommendation for the waiver inclusion. The Planning Commission discussed this in April, and the board also in April. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at their May 21 meeting, and they did recommend approval, so tonight we are seeking a decision from the board on this proposed amendment. Glad to answer any questions.
Questions to staff? Thank you. Now conduct a public hearing on ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning, Article 8, development plans and approvals, Part 801, master development plans, Section 165-801.03 waivers. The proposed revision to allow for a waiver of the master development plan requirement if an applicant chooses to process a detailed site plan in lieu of a master development plan. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against this ordinance amendment? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the amendment to Chapter 165 of our code.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the ordinance amendment is approved. Now, we're into other planning items. Number one is the second discussion on comprehensive plan amendment, Middletown/LFCC Swazza. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you. This item is in front of you. It last appeared about a year ago, and of course, it's the second part of the Middletown Lord Fairfax Surmounter Service Area, and it's a future expansion area just north of the Lord Fairfax... Excuse me, Lord Fairfax Community College. As you mentioned, we're seeking direction from the board of supervisors regarding this item, whatever direction that may be, but it also may be moving it forward through the public hearing process. The location of the study is identified on the screen to your left, in the area with the red line, and of course, the text and the map that is on the screen to your left highlights the area of the future expansion area. Again, it is west of Interstate 81, east of Route 11, immediately north of the Lord Fairfax Community College property. Right here, different land uses are proposed. There was a lot of discussion regarding the Surmounter Service Area, who would serve the property, and again, we're at the point this evening when we'd be looking for some direction from the board of supervisors on this item. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have, or go into more detail, should that be necessary, on the different components of the study area.
Questions to staff? This is not a new topic. I was approached by another landowner in that area, and who requested to be included in consideration, and if it was the pleasure of the board, I'd like to perfect that request, to see if we're interested, and have some time to do so, but I am in support of the request we have. So staff is looking for direction. If you took my request, you'd probably postpone for 30 days.
Mr.... Sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that this is an excellent opportunity, and as the business friendly committees had expressed, this is one of those opportunities where it actually enhances the ability of the county and landowner to make some fairly good decisions based upon actions that's already been taken, so I would support the request to be more inclusive in this swazza, but for no longer than 30 days, because I would like to see this move forward.
Is that a motion?
I would make it a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, but Supervisor Hess. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's some other detailed issues. I'm not really going to bring them up right now, but there's some things in this that I'm going to push some buttons, maybe with the sanitation authority.
Well, in fairness to them, I think it's an easier question, the more thorough the inquiry is on what we might actually be talking about, and that's part of my motivation, rather than a piecemeal approach that leads one to the wrong conclusion sometimes. So... Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know the owner's representative is here tonight, and they were looking for some action, and I just want to make sure that they understand what we're trying to accomplish, and they would agree with the action.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. If I understand correctly, at your June 24 meeting, this will come back again as a discussion item to either be inclusive of the adjoining... The additional property that you're referencing, or just for this, either option.
And I didn't know that you had a strict timeframe that you're looking at, and I certainly don't want to put it off any longer than that, because I would like to see this move forward, because I think it's of great benefit to the college and the surrounding area.
No, I think that the answer is, is we do have time to make the right decision, but this has been going on for a while, so hopefully, you'll get the information. You're trying to glean from the sanitation authority and other information, and we can move forward next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, the motion is to postpone for 30 days to our next meeting. Is that really 30 days, Mr. Riley?
A little less, but it's till June the 23rd. Is that correct?
Somebody have a calendar handy.
25th.
The maker of the motion is second. Can we accept that as a friendly amendment?
25th, yes.
That way. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? June 25th. All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Excuse me. No? Any votes? The motion passes, and it will be postponed till June 25th. Next is another discussion on private streets in R5 zoning district. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff has received a second request to allow the use of private streets in the R... For all types of developments within the R5 Residential-Recreational Community Zoning District. Currently, the ordinance requires... States that the use of private streets in the R5 is only permitted within age-restricted communities, and only if approved by the board supervisors. Now, the amendment before you proposes to allow the use of private streets within all types of communities in the R5, but would still require board approval. Now, this is a second request, as I stated, and some of the changes from the original request are, first, a requirement that the development must include a minimum of 1,000 lots. There's also a statement about the paving designs being provided to the county for approval. Now, just a little history for the first ordinance request. It was reviewed by the DRC back in October of 2012, and the Planning Commission, Public Works Committee, the Transportation Committee, and the board of supervisors discussed the item in 2012 and 2013, and ultimately, the board chose not to send that forward to public hearing. Now, for the second request, it was sent forward for discussion at your February meeting, and it was sent to the Transportation Committee for evaluation. Transportation Committee discussed this at their February and April meetings. At the February meeting, they did send it to the DRC for discussion, and at their April meeting, the Transportation Committee sent it back to the board of supervisors with no action. Now, just to jump back, the DRC discussed this at their February 24... February 2014 meeting. They did express concern about the maintenance of the private streets, and as well as the potential for the HOA to go defunct, and then the county would then be requested to take care of the streets. The Planning Commission held a discussion at their May 7 meeting, and they also expressed concern about the maintenance of the private streets, and they also wanted the ordinance to be expanded to include horizontal B-dot requirements in addition to the vertical, which is proposed in the ordinance. So tonight, we are seeking direction from the board of supervisors as to whether this is ready to be sent forward to public hearing. All right, we got... Excuse me. Glad to answer any questions.
On the last round, not the previous round, did we actually get a recommendation from the Planning Commission?
They simply had a discussion. They just sent it forward with their comments. They didn't make a recommendation.
Without recommendation from Transportation.
Yes, sir.
All right, folks, what is your pleasure?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Is there anything magic about the 1,000-lot threshold? I mean, what difference would it make? I mean, what difference would it make if it were 500 or 2,000, or? And I kind of ask this in the vein that I understand this ordinance was originally constructed rather narrowly to apply to this subdivision. Are we going to, are we creating additional problems constructing it narrowly that we're just going to have to face again the next time we have a request?
I would say no. That was an addition by the applicant. It wasn't a staff inclusion. However, new R5 communities have to be a minimum of 500 acres by ordinance. The maximum density is 2.3 units an acre, so that's 1,150 units, so.
Answers my question.
Other questions?
I have a question that speaks to the ordinance itself, and it talks about local streets with an ADT of 400 or less, right away of 30 feet. How wide would that street be? I'm sorry, we're in...
Page two.
Three.
Page two, number three.
Okay. One, three.
Okay, that was, within the existing ordinance, it's private. Typically, the private streets are 24 feet of pavement, driving lane width, and then you'd have your curbs.
One of the questions that raises in my mind is that if, in fact, the private streets were for age-restricted, it doesn't appear there'd be as much utilization of the streets as if we opened it up to families, which would generally have, A, more cars, and B, more traffic. So, how is developer willing to look at that? Because if every family member has a car, and you have a driveway that holds two cars, where the other car is going to park? And if you have friends over for an afternoon cookout, how far are they going to have to walk, under which weather conditions should be able to, I guess, enjoy the company of those who live there? Is there, is there something inherent in that that maybe we need to look at if we're going to open it up to non-age-restricted? The increased use of the street? 24 feet is, two cars can pass, and that's it. There's no parking either side, right?
If they do a minimum, if the developer wanted to expand to allow for on-street parking, they would need to expand that, or provide additional parking bays elsewhere.
I just fear that if we get into a lot of non-age-restricted, family-type settings, have a lot of traffic and a lot of parking needs that doesn't appear to be addressed with the existing ordinance, the way it stands right now. Would you concur with that, or would you say that's not something we need to worry about? Chair, be.
I'll defer to the Transportation.
I'll walk up here and give you a non-answer. To be, to be honest, it's somewhat difficult to say. You definitely aren't going to have a lot of more of those types of activities outside of an age-restricted development. It is important to note that the ordinance refers to a minimum, so they are certainly able to go larger, but that is something we certainly want to be looking at throughout the review process.
Yeah, I think if we're trying to minimize future problems here, that kind of struck me as one, because like I say, if we're opening it up, if we're expecting more vehicles to be there per family.
Right.
It just doesn't seem to fit. I mean, people aren't going to walk a long distance to get to that residence, and if you've only got parking for two or three cars, like I say, an afternoon cookout, where are those people going to park?
Let's take quick. And the applicant may already have something like that in mind. I haven't seen an actual design at any time recently, so they may be able to answer that as well.
Question?
Just a comment to this question. I think that really goes more to marketability, and I think these folks know what the market demands and what their needs are. If they don't choose to meet those, it seems like they'll be granted little success.
I don't disagree, but I'm looking at, because I'm already dealing with several of these as it is, and those problems crop up, and I'm trying to look ahead and see what might crop up if something's changed.
Other discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make note that in the Gainesboro District, we have a number of older subdivisions with private streets that are a nightmare, and the common thread with those subdivisions seems to be that their deed of dedication or covenants don't give the HOA the authority to levy assessments to maintain the road, and I think as long as there is some provision or some understanding that the HOA has that authority as contained in the deed of dedication or covenants, I don't see a problem. I myself live in a subdivision with private roads. We maintain adequate reserves, just went through a partial repaving. We take care of our own. We get our road cleared a lot sooner than we would when snow falls if we were dependent upon VDOT, so I don't see a problem.
Other discussion? I guess I'm going to venture forth with some comments. This was a challenge that we all inherited long before anybody on this board sat. Developers have come and gone, or potential developers, and each time, we worked with a developer to try to make a challenge, a better situation. In the meantime, under the last phase, many quality people moved into this community and became assets of the county, but you know what? The project is still a challenge. My best guess is, at the end of the day, it's going to depend on whether this developer stays in for the long haul, and how good of a job he does, and how many promises he keeps. And his track record, as best I can see, is good. That's no guarantee of the future. It is very helpful to me that we know that we have the buy-in of the current citizens there, by and large, to work with the situation. This has been, as I said, a huge challenge to Frederick County since its inception, and the impacts to Frederick County for especially the non-age-restricted will be long felt into the future by Frederick County, especially in the school, arena, fire and safety, police protection, et cetera. But we inherited it, and now some folks live there, and I'm hopeful that we can work together and have a cooperative developer to come up with the best we can, given what we've got to work with. That's the end of my speech.
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance, we've been looking at it quite a while, and it continues to bother me, and I still really do not like it. And I want to make a comment. When I hear, I've heard several people from the community, it's not the community that we have an issue with, it's the ordinance. When I hear people say, well, the only difference is we're no longer an age-restricted community, the roads are already planned, we're just no longer an age-restricted community. The reason we allow private roads from age-restricted communities is because there's a limited amount of traffic. You have two individuals. No one else is allowed to stay in that house. You anticipate that you're going to have one or two cars at the most at a house, rather than having, like in my neighborhood, where my neighbor has four teenagers who drive. There are six vehicles. That's why we are concerned about this, and that's why I'm concerned about this. The developer, your development is great. I've driven through it. It's beautiful. I hope one day it's still around when I'm retiring. But the fact of the matter is, is that we need to be concerned about not only your development, but we need to be concerned about future developments, and who will be in front of us five years from now. So, Mr. Chairman, that's into my speech.
Anyone else? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, and I don't know who to address this to, but I know in the communities in my district, there has been some discussion about what the responsibility and the authority of the Sheriff's Department is to actually enforce traffic regulations within that subdivision. I just wonder if the owners, residents there now, actually understand that there's a lot of things that the sheriff, Mr. Collins may be able to speak to this, that the sheriff cannot enforce, as far as people speeding through the neighborhood, things like that, because they are private streets. And I get several calls about that, and the sheriff, I'm sure, would say the same, that they get calls about, can you come out and set up speed traps and do those types of enforcements? And on private streets, they're very limited on what they can do. So, that's another issue I think needs to be addressed.
If the road is not VDOT certified, you cannot write a speeding ticket. End of story. The laws are very restricted. We do, we have two subdivisions that we had to carve out special exceptions for in the code, and that being Lake Holiday and Shawnee Land. And even there, we only qualify them as highways under the code of Virginia, so, but that still only allows for a very limited number of tickets that can be written, so...
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I won't sit here and be quiet. I'm not going to say too much. This has been a peculiar issue, development reasons you stated. Issues with the roads, if they're constructed with the vertical section according to VDOT specs, I think will hold up and last appropriately. Mr. Schlossstein and I did a considerable tour of county roads, private roads. They don't make any difference if they're gravel roads, asphalt roads, if they were constructed correctly, they last sufficiently. The other thing that I will maybe address to the citizens and to the developer, the issues of speed can be easily taken care of with the design of the roads. There's many traffic calming measures, and if you want to put speed bumps in, which VDOT won't allow, have at it. I hate them, but that allows you to put them in and wear out your shocks and everything else on your car, repair business, but at this point, Mr. Chairman, I would be very supportive of moving this on to public hearing. Let's get this thing off the fence post.
Other discussion? All right, staff is looking for direction. Does the board desire to send this to public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to forward this on to...
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Collins. Discussion on the motion?
Schedule this public hearing for July, because June is filling up rapidly.
Is that okay with the maker? Second?
Yes, sir.
Rest of the board? Director's second part.
We only have one.
Oh, we only have one. Makes it easy. Is that the first one?
I believe so. First meeting?
July 9th, I believe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, should we ensure that all seven members are going to be present, so certain members don't get phone calls while they're on vacation?
Board schedule's been put out for a long time.
Ready to vote? All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posno is scheduled for public hearing on July 9th. Next is a discussion on setback requirements for multifamily residential buildings. Go ahead.
Ken, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is a proposed revision to the front setbacks for multifamily residential buildings. As you may remember, this is a new housing type that was added with the RP district revision approved back in January of 2013. Now, during the discussion and public hearing process, a high-density residential streetscape section schematic was provided that showed how this housing type would be developed. The schematic depicted a multifamily building with a front setback anywhere from 12 to 20 feet. Now, however, the text adopted for the multifamily residential buildings showed a 35-foot front setback, which was contrary to what was shown and discussed during the process. So, we now have an applicant that is trying to implement the process, implement this housing type, and they have requested that the county look back into the, and reevaluate the 35-foot front setback. So, the DRC reviewed this at their March 2014 meeting, and they recommended a reduction from 35 to 20 feet. The Planning Commission discussed this at their May meeting, and they were also inconcurrents about the 20-foot setback. So, tonight, we are seeking direction from the board as to whether this is ready to be sent forward to public hearing. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, staff. I personally look forward to discussion by the board, because I don't know what I think about this one, so I'm hoping we'll have some discussion if we need staff to help us out. Anybody have a concern or support for? Or like me, don't know?
So, we're looking at the 20-foot setback instead of the...
Sir, excuse me?
We're looking at 20 feet?
Yes, sir. Right, and if you may remember, during the public hearing and discussion, the work sessions, we showed a number of pictures for the similar types of housing that showed the buildings closer to the streets, and that would implement the 20-foot, as opposed to a 35, which would put them farther away from the building, which is not in align with more of a high-density, compact environment.
Mr. Chairman, is this another step towards us being able to approve town centers as a possible, I know we've had that discussion about creating a town centers, and developers have come in interested in creating town centers in Frederick County. Was that any kind of...
I mean, this particular housing type is in the RP. It's not part of a town center, which would be more in line with kind of the draft TN, traditional neighborhood design district that's been floating around for a while. This is high-density residential, which is comprehensive plans in certain areas. So, it is a high-density, more of a higher-density residential, but it doesn't have commercial component, which is what you would see with a town center.
If we were to have a town center to combine the two...
Yes, sir.
As some of the examples that we've been shown, then this would apply in that situation?
This type of a setback would be in align with that.
Are you going to have a town center in a RP, or are you going to have a different designation on it?
Well, the particular project that prompted this reevaluation is RP. It's residential with a small pocket of commercial.
Is it, is it the same development?
It's not an urban center.
No, I mean, recently, the board saw the rezoning for the Madison Village project.
So, what, the outcome of the private streets has little bearing on the desire of somebody to have less setbacks?
No, this would be completely separate from the private street discussion. This is off, because the 20-foot would be off of a public road.
That's R5?
Right, correct, sir.
It is not applicable, correct? Okay.
What was the discussion from the Planning Commission? Was this, was it a unanimous type of move forward, or...
Yes, sir. We received no negative comments or requests for changes.
Has staff seen a deficiency in reasonable planning for housing that this change makes possible where it wouldn't have been otherwise? Have you had?
I think the change that we're requesting is consistent with what was envisioned when the Madison Village rezoning went through six months ago. When they got down and started designing it, they realized the 35-foot setback wasn't on their schemes that we had been talking about, and that's where this amendment came from.
Okay, so, if it's a reasonable request there, all RP's, is there a, is there an effect county-wide in all RP's that might not be so good?
No, I wouldn't, I would suggest there's not. It applies in local street environments. If it's a major street, we have residential separation buffers, which forces the building off of the major street.
Also note that this housing type is only permitted within areas designated as high-density residential on the comp plan. It's not applicable to all RP within the county. So, it's only in...
All high-density RP's, then. It still has a county-wide effect or anything that fits the definition, correct?
Correct.
I'm just trying to, trying to find out if it's reasonable someplace, and then if it's reasonable someplace is reasonable everywhere that fits the same criteria. If I, if I had personal experience living on a street with both, I might, I might know what it feels like. If I drove one of them, I might know what it happens. I don't. It's 35 feet to 20 feet, and it's a tough call. Would it be fair to say that that particular development cannot develop as envisioned without this ordinance change?
They would be able to. It would push, it would push the buildings back. You may wind up with parking in between. It would, aesthetically, it would not be... It would, aesthetically, it would not be a better project if you push it further back from the roads.
Okay. Supervisor DeHaven?
I guess in RP, we require a separation between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, and a four-foot wall?
Five-foot sidewalks. You have the curb, two foot, five foot. Well, I mean, the multifamily building wouldn't have front loaded, front-loaded parking. It would have parking behind the structure, away from the road.
All right, so that's not a concern. That helps.
In, in these types of developments, there's generally amenities like playgrounds?
Yes, sir. There's a, yes, there's a recreational calculation based on the number of units.
Other discussion? All right, does the board choose, what, what do we have here? Planning Commission did make a recommendation or did not? Positive comments, and nobody else reviewed it prior to us.
It went from the DRC...
Transportation Committee.
No, sir. It went from the DRC to the Planning Commission and now to the board.
We're acting on a request and not a recommendation.
Correct. This is a...
All I wanted to establish, we have a request. How does the board want to deal with it?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just on the fence post. You got your high-density and how you want to cut down the setbacks, it's like you're packing everything in, and I can't get this thing settled in my mind. I'm not ready to do anything with this right now.
Did you, did you say parking would be in the rear? I seem to remember earlier drawings of such things.
Right, typically, if, when you have the closer setbacks, you, you're not going to have any parking in the front. You're going to have the access road into the development off of...
Real question is, is the reduction of this setback going to make parking in the rear more possible, more viable, or more likely?
More likely.
Rather than having a, a setback in the front that really keeps you from doing that?
Having an increased setback is going to have parking in the front more likely, whereas if you allow for a lesser setback, you're going to have a sidewalk or, you know, pedestrian facilities in the front, and you're going to have the parking in the back.
I think that's significant. Other questions?
It's just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I think I'm okay with the 20. I think the 20 helps. Parking in the rear, multi-story, multifamily. I think the market will decide who is right.
It seems like families in the backyard are better than families in the front yard next to a street. I don't know if it's that simple or not.
I'd, I'd agree with Supervisor DeHaven.
Okay, let's, let's try a motion. Does somebody have one? This is to whether to send it to public hearing or not.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move if we followed it to public hearing.
All right, a motion to send to public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
All right, let's go down the line. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes off to public hearing. Mr. Riley, do you want to date on this one, or you want to work with the calendar? What's your pleasure?
We'll try and accommodate it on July the 9th.
Okay. Is that okay with the maker and a second of the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now we have another, no, we don't. We did that. Board liaison reports, are there any? All right, then we'll go to citizen comments. This is the portion of meeting the board sets aside for citizens to address the board on any topic. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Please give your name, magisterial district limits, your comments, the three minutes, please. Come forward.
Good evening, sirs. My name is Ken Hunter, and I live in Shawnee Land. You guys were commenting on it tonight, and I agree with you. They go way too fast. I'm, I'm back here again with what Mr. Riley said two months ago. I was out of town, so I couldn't come back on this. But you said you, Frederick County doesn't own Shawnee Land? Here's the deed, sir. I got it today. I'm going to leave it here with you all, so you can look at it. Frederick County owns the roads, all the buildings and everything, and we're double taxed. It says we're a political subdivision in this deed also. I'd just like to get clarification what that means, you know? Doesn't address that in the sanitary district law. There were two file cabinets full of Shawnee Land historical documents left in safe, safekeeping at the 50 Tomahawk Trail. I'd like to know where those documents are, so that some of us can go and look at them and copy those documents. They should still be at 50 Tomahawk Trail. I would like to see a moratorium of all building in Shawnee Land until a study is done, according to federal standards, on what you've been talking about, the population density, because we're about 600 acres there. And if you look at the people-per-ratio of property, you guys are close now. You just opened it up to 1,500 more, you know, building lots. And I'm afraid we're going to have to put in sewers and stuff in solid rock, because that's all you have up there. We have an 80 by 120-foot lot. And you start putting 1,500 more homes in there, you know, with those alternate septic systems, you got major problems. The ground shifts up there, it cracks those systems, and all the feces, guess where it goes? It goes downhill. And it comes to you. Comes right here. That's what's going to happen there. We have seven county employees that work there part-time, because I sure as heck can't find them. In the winter, they're not there. Go some of the other places, they're there. Strange. We pay $1.5 million in wages and benefits to those employees to work at Shawnee Land, they're not there. You guys say you're stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. I'd like to see Shawnee Land go away from this seven employees that you have there to a one-manager professional. He or she has engineering skills, not what's there now, because what's there now is a, is a disaster. I've, I've given you some of my explanations the month before. It shows a non-engineering lack of anything there in Shawnee Land. I can give you all examples of a lot of things that's going on there. And we're paying top dollar for garbage. I was going to bring you some photos, but... Stop.
Time's up.
Okay, the county website for Shawnee Land, okay, this is the website. You guys all put your bios on there, all right? You know, on the website? Why can't you have the bios and the photos of the employees out there at Shawnee Land so that we know who they are? No one knows who they are. You don't see them. Very rarely do you see an employee there. We have four people in the, in the county, according to Mr. Riley, that drives a taxpayer-driven...
Concluding? Pardon? Are you concluding?
Yes, I'll conclude on this one, and I'll let you guys decide on the other four. We have, you guys have decided that four people can drive taxpayer cars on the taxpayers, 24/7. They drive them to and from work. This is a, I just don't understand this. I worked for the federal government for 39 years. I worked in some very austere countries. I even got shot at, and I never had a card unless I was in a combat zone. But you guys say that...
Time's up. Time's up.
Okay, can you address these for me, maybe?
You can leave them with the clerk.
Who's the clerk?
Mr. Tibbs will take them. Thank you, sir.
I'll, I'll re-address these at the, I'm new to this. Like I said before, I'm going to address my further questions next time to the...
No, it's not my intent to limit you.
No, I, I understand, sir.
My intent is to have some order in our meetings, and so I have to be the enforcer, and we're out of time.
Well, you're the bad guy.
I got to see if anybody else wants...
You're the bad guy, and I'm the bad guy. We're going to, we're going to get along?
Give him your papers, and let me see if anybody else would like to speak.
Hopefully not. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no, close the public hearing, or the citizen comment portion meeting, board of supervisors comments. I just have one. Folks up there at Lake Frederick, when y'all don't get along, it comes back to us. And if you can't figure that out, so we do the best we can to work with it beforehand and afterwards, but my best wishes to you. Other supervisor comments? All right.
Chairman, move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Meeting adjourned.